Special Programs, we're welcome to the new school year. I see some new faces, so um why don't we do some introductions around the room?
Sure, Hugo Fernandez, the alternate from the UFS, I represent LaGuardia Community College.
Welcome.
Donovan Barington, Vice Chair for Fiscal Affairs for the University Student Senate, and I'm a student at John J. College.
Welcome.
Jane Sovereign, Deputy General Counsel, and I'm here with Rick.
Rick Schaefer, General Counsel.
Frank Sanchez, Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs.
Cal Robles-Roman, Trustee and Chair of this committee.
Frida Foster, Trustee and Vice Chair.
Philip Berry, Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees.
Ulrich Masurian, Deputy to the Secretary of the Board.
Laura Swain, Archivist and Information Guardian for the Board of Trustees Office.
Great. Everyone should have some form of electronic device, iPad, laptop, to access the agenda and other supporting documents for this meeting. There are also copies of the agenda and supporting documents on the table if you do not have paperless access. At this time, there are four action items, three information items, and one student disciplinary appeal before the committee today. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs will now go into executive session to consider this student disciplinary appeal. So I'm gonna ask our guests to please step out. If I may ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of the June first.
Some more.
Thank you, can I have a second and discussion? All in favor, opposed?
Aye.
The minutes are approved.
I'm just the one that's stanchion because I wasn't present.
Now, we're gonna move to approval of the revisions of Article fifteen, CUNY Board of Trustees bylaws.
So, yeah, given the hour, let's try to do this as a group. We've got, we've got three sets of changes that are necessary because of recent state legislation. Just to backtrack for a minute, you'll all, or some of you will recall, that we've been engaged in really what's a two-year process of amending CUNY policies and procedures relating to incidents of sexual assault and other forms of sexual misconduct. Initially, this was undertaken to bring ourselves in compliance with, primarily with federal law. Then, last year, at the governor's urging, SUNY undertook some revisions of its policies, and we were asked to coordinate with SUNY, which we did. And we reached what we thought was an end point when we revised our policies relating to sexual misconduct and the procedures in Article fifteen. And then, after that occurred, the governor introduced legislation, which with some modification, was eventually passed, applicable not only to SUNY and CUNY, but also to all of the private universities within New York State that was somewhat different from what had been the policies passed by SUNY and CUNY. And so, what we're now engaged in is sort of a fine tuning of our policies and procedures to bring them into compliance with that new state legislation. We have undertaken to do that in three respects. One is the sexual misconduct policy itself, where there were some variances, including notably the addition of a Bill of Rights, a Student Bill of Rights section, which we had previously had in our website, but it wasn't actually part of the policy. It really, in some ways, is just a summary of the key elements of the policy. But the legislation contained a requirement that the Bill of Rights be part of the policy. To some degree, there was also some tweaking of the Article fifteen procedures. And then finally, perhaps less, least significantly in terms of the volume of change, was a tweaking of the policy on drug and alcohol abuse, which previously contained an amnesty for people who came forward to report such abuse in cases of sexual misconduct. But it was a conditional amnesty requiring them, where appropriate, to undergo certain kinds of treatment or training. And the state legislation didn't have, it was unconditional. And so, that was the third policy that needed to be adjusted. So, we have sent you red line copies of all of those changes. We received, when we sent out the first version of that several weeks ago, we received a large number of comments, which we've collated and worked on and adopted some and rejected some. We've gotten comments from the University Faculty Senate, from the University Student Senate, and from a number of other individuals. Many of them were quite helpful. I believe the University Student Senate, from my conversations with Donovan a moment ago, had a couple more suggestions, one of which I was able to agree to on the spot. We'll meet and, you know, there's gonna be a little bit of fine tuning between this meeting and the board meeting. And of course, at the board meeting, to the extent that there are some changes, I'll let everybody know. But, but I think we've more or less got it right. You know, not a hundred percent, but maybe in the ninety-nine percent range right now. And so, rather than take up more time tonight, sort of going through it issue by issue, I'd rather just see what other questions or comments you may have. And, you know, invite you, if, given the lateness of the hour, if you can't think of them now, to just email them to us, you know, in the next few days, so that we can make whatever last-minute adjustments are appropriate, so we can get this thing to the board at the end of this month. And speaking of timing, I do wanna point out that our normal procedure with respect to board bylaws, as opposed to other resolutions, is that there's a, they're presented twice to the board. Once, first at a meeting where they're an information item, and then at a meeting, a subsequent meeting where they're voted on. I'm asking for a waiver of that, which the board has the power to do, if unanimous, so that the Article fifteen changes can be adopted at the same time the other changes are. So it's all one package, rather than having one element that has to be held over until the end of November at the board meeting then. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we're gonna reach a consensus, an agreement, and there are not gonna be any problems or controversies that would prevent that from happening. But if it happens, it happens. You know, we'll be out of compliance with, the state law becomes effective in October. So if we have to wait till November to do Article fifteen, you know, there's gonna be, I guess, a short period of non-compliance. But if, if there's a strong feeling that we need to deliberate more on it, we can live with that. But I think, I think we can probably do all of these at the same time. And so, you know, why don't I just stop talking now and see if there are any questions or comments from, from you all?
Madam Chair, I mean, I've reviewed the changes and listened to what counsel has said. And I would be prepared to make a motion that we accept the three amendments and approve these. Is the word ad sereatum?
Well, we'll do it as a package, or we'll just vote on all three at the same time.
Um, yeah, I, I just wanna say one quick thing. I, I agree, I think, I mean, I read through them quickly. It's two, I think there's two buckets of issues here, and I think counsel has gone through sort of the legal and the procedural. And I have the utmost confidence that they have taken the enough, is enough statute and have now conformed our bylaws and procedures and policy to conform with the new law. The other piece is the more public and policy piece, which, you know, quick discussion, and I know where we're going. But this is like a big damn deal, just, I can't state it in any other, more legal terms than that. This statute is really setting the benchmark for the rest of the country. And, and people around the country are actually looking to see how New York universities are gonna be implementing Enough Is Enough to see how they do it in their state. So, in that way, I just wanna flag for us and for how we present this at the board meeting, the legal, the procedural, and also from the policy perspective, I'd like to have a short discussion, maybe at the board meeting. I'll be guided by counsel's recommendation. What is our, how are we gonna introduce it to our students, how are we gonna introduce it to our faculty? And what's gonna be CUNY's presentation on Enough Is Enough? I was just, and so was CUNY present this week with, at an event with Governor Cuomo, talking about this. So he's gonna be monitoring this very closely, so it helps us to make sure that we introduce it in a way that, you know, that does CUNY proud.
Let me just address that because it's an important point. We're not waiting, we did not wait. We have training obligations, we have all kinds of obligations under our existing policy that we adopted last-
December.
December, which we have been implementing since then. And, and we rolled out the orientation programs to the students. We've done vast amounts of training of category after category of employees, of faculty and staff, of coaches, and so on. So that is all being done already, and we think we're on top of that. Anticipating when we saw that, you know, the new state legislation passed at the end of the last legislative session, we already began to revise our training materials to make sure they were gonna be consistent with that legislation. You know, we knew we didn't, we are presumptuous that, you know, the board would pass exactly what we were redrafting. But we knew what was in the legislation, that was no mystery. And so, we already revised our training materials to that end. And we have been very active, and we believe we're really on top of all of those issues. So we will, you know, whether this gets, I mean, I assume this will get passed at the September board meeting, but the September board meeting is four weeks down the road, the semester will already have begun. We didn't wait for that. And, and so, we are, we are really on top of it. I wanna give great credit to Jane Sovereign, Deputy General Counsel, who, along with Jennifer Ruben, who was here at an earlier meeting, unfortunately is leaving the central office to go to, to the College of Staten Island. Jennifer was the university's Chief Diversity Officer. And with, with Frank Sanchez's staff, we've been working very, very hard to have this already rolled out. And so, we're, we're confident we're on top of that.
Good, 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 good. So, the motion on the table is to approve-
The amendments to all three of these.
To all three as a state.
I would be willing to support waiving the right to move this directly to a board for a vote if we can add what was recommended through the Student Committee with regards to allowing, providing in the bylaws, it states that the college not have the discretion, or members of the university not have the discretion, to repeal the grade from the expulsion from the transcript. So there's a portion in the article that states that once the student requests that it be moved from the transcript, the college can remove it. The committee recommended that it be clearly stated in the bylaws for transparency purposes.
Right, let me just, let me just clarify that again. So, all of these penalties go on the transcript. And there is a provision that after the lapse of a certain period of time, I won't, it gets a little complicated, I won't go into it. A student may request the removal of the notation on the transcript. And it shall, and the current language is, it shall be removed. So that was intended to be nondiscretionary, and Donovan wants it to be clarified a little bit because the, some of his colleagues felt that the word shall wasn't strong enough. And I have already agreed that we will add shall as a matter of right. Upon the request of the student, shall as a matter of right be removed. So that clarification, I have no problem with, because that was the original intent of the language. So we're not changing it subsolutely, we're just making it crystal clear. And so, that, that's great.
I think, I don't believe you seconded the motion then.
No, I didn't.
So I'd be willing to second the motion made by-
What is the motion for the record, please?
The motion is to approve all three resolutions as a package.
But will there be, but there's gonna be discussion, correct?
Just to add, my, my support was that when it goes to the board, that that additional language be added.
Yeah, it will be there.
Any comments?
So discussion, I mean, I'm guessing that obviously most of this language comes from the legislation. And I know that the UFS has already shared some of their concerns already, so I support it. I wanted to just speak for a second also about how this is gonna be rolled out. I appreciate that the administration is already working on trainings, and I participated, some of them as a faculty member, at least online, not otherwise, in my department meetings and such. Just to let you know that the UFS has intentions of possibly putting together a conference on this very issue. And then we wanna reach out to the USS to possibly work with us jointly. And we'd be more than welcome to have the trustees interested to, just to point out to the faculty and anyone else attending the importance of this legislation and this issue. I don't know exactly what this particular committee, what role we would play in the suspension of the bylaws to allow for speeding this through. I don't technically, I don't support it, 'cause I, I do believe that, you know, those rules around bylaws are created so that people could have time to consider it, since bylaws are, you know, so important to the institution. But, like, since I don't really know what role we play in that, and I know that, I don't know what the consequences are of being out of compliance, that I'm obviously not gonna fight that process.
Right, what I would ask the committee to do is approve the issue of the waiver, so that we don't lose the possibility. Then the board itself will have to decide whether to do it by unanimous vote. If they don't do it by unanimous vote, then the Article fifteen changes will need to be brought back a second time in November. But that's, I think, really a born decision. I would ask you to give them the opportunity to consider that by passing the whole package today.
And does it need a friendly amendment to recommend?
No, because you're, you're actually taking action. I've presented it as an action item, not as an information item.
Alright, thanks.
Is there a second to the motion that you seconded?
Yeah, I think-
I seconded the motions.
All in favor, friendly amendment?
Amendment that the language be included when it's provided to the board for a full vote.
Yeah, I've already, I've already committed to that.
In the act of, first meeting.
And it's on video, so you can't back-
Yep, yeah, yeah.
All in favor? Any names? The ayes have it.
So, I am gonna, approval of the revisions of the CUNY sexual assault policy is included in that. The approval of the drugs, alcohol, use amnesty is also included in that. So we move to our information items, we will go through these very quickly. The first one on our information items on our agenda, page four, discussion on mental health and wellness. Keep us to a short conversation. Couple of folks had reached out to me in my capacity as a, as a CUNY trustee, just generally on the issue of mental health of students in college. And there had been a recent spate of articles about suicides of young people. So after discussion with Vice Chancellor Sanchez, as well as the chancellor, who also has a particular interest in this issue, we thought it would be a good opportunity for this committee to, to look at the issue more specifically vis-à-vis CUNY. Chancellor, vice chancellor?
Oh, absolutely. So, I was asked to give kind of a brief summary, you know, some of our mental health services across CUNY. And in particular, as it's become an important issue, suicide prevention. And so, I, I put together kind of a summary sheet here that I'll share with you. A lot of you know nationwide, more and more students with increasing complex longstanding psychiatric histories are turning to college counseling centers for care. College counseling centers across the country are challenged to meet the growing increasing complex demand for care. Regarding suicide prevention, our nineteen CUNY counseling centers are facing this growing challenge with new initiatives, innovative programming, and best practices. In terms of suicide prevention efforts at CUNY, CUNY counseling centers utilize a comprehensive public health approach to promoting mental health awareness and suicide prevention at our campuses. Although there is naturally some variance, variability, depending on the community college, four-year graduate professional schools in our different campuses, our counseling staff conduct gatekeeper trainings to raise awareness of an increasing proficiency in identifying, responding to, effectively, and referring students in distress to care. Peer counseling programs are targeted to increase help-seeking behavior in at-risk and under-utilizing groups who may find it easier to turn to a peer. There is free online mental health and suicide prevention screenings that are made available on counseling center websites. And we promote the goal of, in order to promote a goal of a caring community, close collaboration with other groups on campus, stakeholders, including residents, life, and faculty is nurtured. The Central Office of Student Affairs, we are trying to expand and implement a variety of best practice and mental health and suicide prevention efforts. We recently introduced and began the implementation of an after-hours crisis line, now available to all CUNY residents, life students. This has recently been put in place just over the last year. There's been expansion of our affiliation with the Behavioral Health College Partnership, so that CUNY students requiring psychiatric hospitalization, instead of being referred to units serving the general population, are instead referred to a groundbreaking and state-of-the-art facility specializing exclusively in the care of college students.
Wow. Where is that?
Long Island Jewish, right.
Wow.
CUNY-wide affiliation with the Center for Collegiate Mental Health allows for industry-leading and student-specific assessment and follow-up care, as well as benchmarking our students' mental health issues against a national sample. Just last April, we invited also, and working with the JED Foundation, and they have a, the JED Foundation, the Clinton Health Matters Initiative, they have a campus program. We brought in the CEO of the JED Foundation and some of his staff to speak to all of our vice presidents of Student Affairs. And they've offered all of our campuses a free assessment of our mental health services through, you know, through the lens of best practices, just to kinda gauge how we're doing. We caught our vice presidents at the end of the year, we've only had one school take advantage of it so far, Guttman. But we are planning to remind the opportunity of this assessment to all the campuses this, actually, tomorrow during our Vice President's Council meeting to take advantage.
I think, may I, may I make a suggestion? I think it's something that should be done. I mean, it's like, you know, somebody's offering you a gift, you snatch it out of their hands. It's something that we're starting to look at, and one of the things that I was surprised, when we just started this conversation, was that we don't have any data. And so, the chancellor has committed to at least looking at, you know, making sure that your office, you actually started the conversation with the chancellor on getting information and seeing where we may have issues and where we may not have issues. But I think this is an issue that CUNY should develop some transparency around.
Absolutely, and I think the assessment tool that the JED Foundation offers is a great starting point. In terms of data collection, we can do a better job. We do know in terms of, obviously suicides, the number of suicides on our campuses, which, which aren't many, where it gets a little bit more difficult, our accounting for the suicides that occur off-campus. There is no protocol, we aren't, in the central office typically aren't informed. As staff may be informed through publications or things that come in the community. But that data is very hard in terms of the accuracy of it. It's kind of a guess, it's just trying to be notified of the, of any suicides that are occurring off-campus. And the data's gonna fluctuate.
Any questions? Questions or your report follows, I don't know if there's anything else?
I'm gonna, you know, it's a very, considering the time we have, I'm gonna give my time to the students.
Okay.
And I'll incorporate my report into the next, into the next meeting.
So we have a university senate year-end report?
Alright, thanks for giving us the opportunity to time. And if you look in front of you, we do have a draft copy, so pretty much we're gonna run through this quickly for time. This is draft copy, so if you get a chance, please take a look. We'll see what it is, come with any edits, any errors, please let us know, so we can make it better before the end of the year. We should be in October, we'll have the final version out. So I'll just quickly go through a bullet point of what is within this draft, and we'll just quickly go through it.
That's a great picture.
They're all great pictures.
It's like a great tie. It's like a great tie.
The first bullet point we have is the City Council Merit Scholarship. We work closely with the university student leaders and the City Council Committee on Higher Education. We're able to get additional six million dollars increase for the merit scholarship, which brought it up to a total of seventeen million. Also, this would help over eighteen thousand students at CUNY, approximately six thousand second-year students and twelve thousand first-year freshmen. Also, they campaign on, they campaign to end sexual assault. Our vice chair Claudia Ward, who is in the room with us, as well as Lucas Amonti, who could have joined us this evening, both testified at the City Council hearing on the prevalence of sexual assault in New York City campuses and have both led the USS effort to strengthen the university policies. We also organized a student-led panel at the annual Summer of Victoria Conference in Albany to discuss the end of sexual assault on campuses. Moving along, the Dream Act, we, you know, we continue, we have always continued to advocate for the New York State Dream Act. The change in leadership at the top of both chambers of the New York State Legislature made a little bit challenging this year. We did, however, participate in statewide New York State Dream Act action in Albany. Moving along, the Free Community Colleges, we organized around ten students, spent several CUNY colleges to testify both about how Free Community Colleges would have assisted them and how it would benefit future students. But also, we've, we'd rate this program cannot be done without the state's investment. Moving along, the annual Higher Education Action Day, the largest turnout ever, we had over four hundred students participate and meet with the representatives in Albany with the legislative. And almost at the end, foster full diversment, something that we continue to support, the foster full diversment campaign, and have taken actions through adaptive resolution, calling for the board to divest from foster full. We also support the development of social responsibility enforcement policy at CUNY. This year, we had a few partnerships, the Cover CUNY Student-Led Health Insurance enrollment program. We continue to build upon new traditions and we begin, beginning previous years. We did our second annual disability conference. We also participated in our second quarterly United New York. And this year, the National Dominican Student Conference, we have submitted a bid and received a bid to host the tenth annual National Dominican Conference next spring. CUNY is the only public school to receive such a bid. Previous hosts have been Yale, they've hosted it twice, Harvard, NYU, University of Pennsylvania, Brown University, Cornell, and name a few.
Wow.
We've also been, we've also partnered with young African leadership to have a symposium, which is coming up pretty soon. We also partnered with, for the International Women's Day, was the second time we've taken that. The second year in a row, we have sponsored this conference, the Gala, also CUNY Got Talent, we did it for the second year. And as usual, our most proud part of it is the scholarship program. And this coming year, our plan is to award over a hundred thousand dollars to student scholarship. So that wraps up our annual report, and you'll get it for, for the end.
If I can just add, as you see, our chairperson has kept us busy.
You get over.
I hope, I hope you're in school.
It's been a pleasure serving, but it's been fun, it's great, it keeps us good.
Who wrote, who wrote this? This is very well, I mean-
This is excellent.
The entire committee, what we did was that we put out, we sent out emails to the committee saying that we're bringing out articles, and then we brainstormed as a group and sat down with the help and lead of Lucas Amonti. We did all of this in-house.
And it's a compilation of all the testimonies and policies that we've written over the year, just compiled into this one report.
Good, something to be very proud of, great work.
And by October, we're gonna re- stamp it, we're gonna add more pictures to it, current things that's happening now is gonna be part of it. And the scholarship did not be a part of it, so it'll be more rather than what it is now.
I think we should tell Phil Lewis and have you guys on the New York line roundtable at some point, to talk about this stuff, 'cause this is gonna happen.
This is unbelievable, this is really, really, really spectacular, congratulations.
I think the beginning of the year would be great. Thank you.
I almost wish you could do something with like bubbles and names and where they come from to show, you know, the, the different members and, and the schools they represent.
Okay, so I, I like to add a little side note. Yes, I, I like to add a little side note. Our chairperson here is studying for an MA in Occupational Therapy. And he's, he's leading a political organization. People always think like he's a policy major.
Right.
So our students are just vast majority diverse, different majors, backgrounds, work, different experiences. It's wonderful. Thank you for the time.
This is just incredibly impressive. And I'm going to bring it back to my office and say, why can't you guys? I think, I think you're, you're, you're opening us end on a very high note, I believe. I think there being no other questions or issues and questions, I think we're adjourned. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.